Okay. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order our March 24th ACSD Board meeting. And at this time, I would like us to go around and introduce ourselves, starting with Jason.
Jason Jones.
Ellen Whelan Weest.
Steve Cash.
Tricia Allen.
Jess Venable Novak.
Ron Mackler.
Laura Hartan.
Steve Orzak.
Mary Heather Noble.
Barbara Wilson.
Wendy Baker.
Jamie McCollum.
Suzanne Buck.
And Ellie is coming, so she'll be a few minutes late. Go ahead, Matt.
Courtney Cron, Director of Teaching and Learning.
Matt Courtney, Director of Finance and Operations.
Excellent. Thank you all. If I could have a motion to adopt the agenda, that would be great.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay. So I just wanted to mention, and I had it in my email. We're going to be a little bit flexible, if it's okay with you. Our, the lawyer will be coming in, and I told him seven. He may be here a little bit. So what we'll do is try to break it as we can, if that's okay. And, and if we're already in, in the superintendent portion, Wendy will kind of just finish that one topic, and then we'll turn it over and go into executive session. So that's, you know, what I think we'll do. That way, we utilize his time the best, if that's okay. All those in favor of adopting the agenda with the little flexibility, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any abstentions? Next is our first public comment period. This is the time that the public can come to us. And we definitely encourage folks, and I'm going to go to my cheat sheet. We encourage comments at our, at our meeting. And if there are comments, we request that you limit them to three minutes per person. And as a reminder, public comment period is not designed to be a discussion, but rather an opportunity for board members for us to listen to you as constituents. And please remember that comments regarding personnel, students, or legal matters will not be heard, you know, by the board at this time. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make a public comment? How about on Zoom? If you could raise your Zoom hand. Give a second there. Seeing none? If there's no public comments, then we can move to the next agenda item, which is a recommendation to approve the minutes of our March 10th meeting. If I could have a motion? Thank you, Suzanne.
I move to recommend approving of the minutes of March 10th, 2025, as written.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And Jamie, second. Any discussion on our minutes? No? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes of March 10th, 2025, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The minutes have been approved. Next on the agenda is approval of the ACSD bills. And as we did last board meeting, I've asked Jason to do the readout for us because we haven't reorg completely the committees. And so, Jason, I'm going to turn it over to you.
On the 14th, I approved the bills. I'm not sure if anyone else approved the bills. I did not hear back that anyone else was able to review the bills. But we did have two warrants. One was a general fund warrant for $353,611.06, and a payroll warrant for $998,145.41. A couple of questions, they were all answered quickly and easily.
Awesome. Okay. So a question I have, and it's maybe to Matt. I know there's a signa, you know, it's required that we have two board members sign off on those. I would be happy to come in, or if someone else would like to come in and review the ledger. I know I've done it before, so it might be easier for me to do it.
I'd switch it for you if it's fine.
So.
It's any two board members?
Yeah.
Based on the articles that were signed?
Yeah, exactly.
Resolutions that were signed.
Yep.
So I don't know if that would be a permanent thing, or if you would switch?
No, I think once the, yeah, once the committee's officially reorged, then the committee can kind of sort out typically who's going to review the bills. And if there's time when there isn't two people to do it, then just let me know, and then I can see if I can get someone else to help in reviewing the bills as well.
There's also usually one or two times over the course of the year where it might be helpful to have a third reviewer for the sake of, you know, somebody from the team is on vacation and we want to get a guess.
Right.
So it's good to have that.
Yep. Okay. This is the first time that's happened. So, but I think, I think we can go ahead and approve the bills as a board, based on Jason's report. And did Jason make a motion? I was talking, yeah. So what, you want to make a motion?
I want to move to approve the bills as read on March 17th.
I'll second. Okay, great.
Could I ask?
Yes.
Is there any time requirement that says that bills have to be approved within a certain amount of time?
Yes.
There is?
They're approved on the Monday. Treasurer signs checks on Tuesday.
So that's, that's statute? That's guidance from the district? What, what, what are we bumping up against here?
Operational.
It's operational?
Yeah.
So could, could we wait until the finance committee is convened, and then someone could review those?
That might be a little long, especially.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think the, the advice might be to maybe, you know, approve the motion as long as there's, you know, nothing, no issues presented by the second reader in this case. So that way, your, things keep going and moving forward.
Right.
You know, in this way.
And I'll be happy to do the bill review tomorrow, so that we can do that. So did we, and Suzanne, you seconded it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So all those in favor of approving the bills pending a second review, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? Excellent. So we'll get that done. First time for everything. Report of the superintendent, I'm sorry, the report of the student reps is, we have no student reps, so we can continue on. And so here's our first part of flexibility, because we're actually running very much ahead, is the report of the superintendent. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Baker.
Great. So first action under report of the superintendent is always personnel appointments and resignations. And there are two, there are three things for your consideration in the agenda. And based on good work of our administrators and other requests, we, we have some others. We are in an enviable position in that we have had some wonderful applicants for open positions. And I think our administrators are really anxious to get your approval here. We are on the front end of hiring processes. And so this, by your making some approvals tonight, it lets these people know that they're, they're ready to go, and so they can let their districts know that they're going to resign their position. So it just helps in lots of different ways. So thanks for your patience with that. So we have Jennifer Billings, who is filling Derek Bartlett's position, you know, at the high school next year, full time. A nice note about that is that Jennifer was mentored by Derek, you know. And so that, that is a connection that feels good. And we're, we're, we're happy to be moving ahead with Jennifer's commitment and dedication continuing in that case. Kristen Kara is a health teacher who's already working at the, at the middle school. In case you're like, wait a minute, I think we've seen that name not that long ago. We have non-renewable contracts. So whenever someone is hired after June 15th, then that's on a non-renewable contract, which means that when the position, the position needs to be open and advertised for the next year, and that person is welcome to apply for that. So, so they're in an open hiring session. And so you will, that's, that's one of the reasons that both Jennifer and Kristen are coming up, even though you might have seen them somewhat recently. So, so Kristen is a health teacher. She has previous experience in the district and has come back because of a lot of the really great things that she's heard about sort of what's happening and where things are going. And she's making a phenomenal difference at Mums already. And then you have Allison Underwood as the girls' lacrosse coach. Happy to see that. In addition to those, we have Margot Austin, who is, hi there, who is the high school's choice for the flexible pathways coordinator. Margot comes to us from Spalding High School, where she has served in a similar capacity, as well as with Gear Up at V-SAC. And she's served many years as a, as an SAP counselor, which is a substance abuse prevention counselor. So all of those experiences come together in finding really great ways for kids to do cool things that relate to graduating. So, so we are really excited to welcome Margot. We're also presenting Wi-Fi Chan as the, as the candidate to hire for the assistant principal position at Mums. This is a position where we had a number of really experienced, high-quality leaders apply, which is, again, an enviable position to be in. One of the reasons that Phi rose to the top of the list is that he has experience and further interest in leading secondary mathematics initiatives. So he's done that in a number of other places. He comes to us most recently from Milton Elementary School. So he, but however, he also has a secondary background. And, and I think, you know, you'll learn more about his details shortly. But, 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 you know, we're, we're excited to welcome him, you know, to the administrative team at Mums. Carl Engleval is a parent educator that's stepping in at the high school. I think Carl's familiar to you as well. Heather Smith is recommended as a school counselor at Mums. Heather has a unique background as mixing art in with, with counseling work. And so she's coming to us, she's in service right now up almost on the Canadian border, and is coming to the area, has a place to live, and is just, I'm just really excited to be with us, and has chosen Mums. And, and I will say, you know, kudos to Michaela and, and the teachers and staff there. They, whatever they're doing over there, people are, just are, just clamoring to be on the team. And that's been, was my experience in interviewing all of the licensed staff that are presented to you tonight. So we're excited about those hires. Also have two resignations. One of them is from Susan Ogilvy, and that is her retirement. Susan has been in the district for, oh gosh, 33.5 years, I think. It's, it's, I know, it's just, it's, it's emotional. It's emotional to think about anybody who has spent their life with the, just joy of being with kids for 33 years. Like, and, you know, Susan and I have been talking since, you know, the beginning of the school year about her thinking about this being her last year, and really coming to that conclusion. And it's been a privilege to support her as she's kind of made that decision. And, and so her, her resignation is here for you to accept, with regret, of course. And Marissa Hennings also is a behavioral consultant at Mary Hogan. And she has taken a position in the area, doing a little bit different work. And so we will be seeing her again. So, so she's, she's taking a step up in her career, and so her resignation is here for you to accept. So there's just some stories. If this is not too much information, I'm, I'm happy to kind of introduce these candidates to you a little bit as we go through this hiring season, so.
Great.
Without taking too much. Okay. There we have it.
Do you mind repeating Margot's last name?
Austin.
Thank you.
Yes. Margot Austin.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Mary Heather.
Oh, thank you, Suzanne.
Yes. So can I have a motion first, and then we can get a motion on the floor, and then take questions?
I know we usually read out all the names, but can I move to accept the personnel appointments and resignations as read out by Superintendent Baker?
Yes.
Okay. There we go.
Perfect. Since they're all not in our, yeah, on our agenda. So that's awesome. Can I have a second? Jamie? Now questions. Steve?
Yeah. So Jen Billings, that's the middle school math teacher. She was a middle school math teacher for a long time.
Yes.
And the last time that she got an appointment, it was temporary. Is this now a permanent again?
Yes.
Or is it one year?
So, so, no, no. She's, she is, is coming onto the district in, in full right. However, she is a probationary employee, just like any teacher would be as they come on. So, you know, every teacher has a two-year probationary period. And so she enters that regardless of past service. If there's a break in service, then that begins again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I just want the board to be mindful, assuming that, is it Wi-Fi?
Yeah.
Is a person of Asian extraction? And my concern is that that position, Esther had a lot of trouble in that position. And so I hope everybody is going to support him in that regard, because we've.
We are excited to have all of the candidates, and we have, we are really, are excited to support all of them in, in every way. So I appreciate you raising the point. And you can be assured that every candidate that joins this district, regardless, will be supported well.
I hope so.
Yes. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none? All those, and I'm going to do the same thing that Tricia did. All those in favor of approving the appointments and resignations, as Dr. Baker reported, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
No.
Okay, Steve and Laura, thank you.
All right. Getting off easy tonight, Suzanne.
Yeah.
Okay. So legislative update. I just, just wanted to really let you know quickly that the House Ed is marking up H454, which was the original bill that the Agency of Ed put forth that had the, the full scope of the governor's proposal. So they are choosing to mark that up to reflect what they believe should happen. The Vermont Superintendent's Association put together a framework that they felt would guide responsible incremental transformation within the state as we try to meet the objectives of educational quality, opportunity, and affordability across the state for all kids in important ways. And that's been received well, both by the House Ed Committee and by the Senate Ed Committee. I think they're beginning to come together around some of those points. The House has a work week this week on those pieces. CTE is, they're taking testimony in, in one or both committees this week on career and tech ed. And Nicole McTavish was here earlier in the legislative season just expressing just deep concern and, and hoping that folks would pay attention to the changes that are being proposed in that. And so that's still something that we're watching very carefully, and I'll, I'll keep the board apprised as to where that is as well. It feels like the, the timeline for making broad changes will be more realistic. The superintendents across the state are asking that specific opportunities for students are identified prior to making large-scale decisions about how we might restructure, you know, as a district, as a state, so that we're making sure that we're doing that in order to bring about the right things for kids. And I think there's some discussion about ensuring that projected savings can actually be realized in certain areas along the process. I think one big thing that's taking place is a discussion about whether the legislature should establish new districts, or whether or not there should be a working group that does so in preparation for the next legislative session, with things like GIS mapping tools and, you know, other, other information that can inform large-scale decisions like that. Essentially, any kind of regional district will, will really represent really large political bodies in Vermont. You know, we don't have a county-wide structure that we really utilize, different from New York, for example. So, so establishing districts that cover large geographic areas is, is really a big deal for Vermont. And so there's a, there's a move that the superintendents support to be able to do that offline with experts that have actual information and, and resources to be able to, to put forward something that, that feels like it's considered into the next legislative session. And, and that appears to be gaining some support, you know, with some, with some particular parameters. So, so that's, it's just a moment to be able to touch base around some of those things. I don't know if there, you have any questions, or you've heard something that I can help to answer. But it was, it was putting a pause in the, in the meeting to be able to let that have some air.
So something new, we got an email from the Vermont School Board Association. Though it's not related to the, this, it is kind of related to it. The yield bill this year, applying all that surplus dollars to it so that they would create a cliff, which worries me that it really then, you know, makes it really difficult the following year or two trying to dig out of that at the same time we're moving forward. Have you heard anything more about that yourself, or Matt?
Can I make a suggestion, actually? I'm sorry to interject, but you're talking about an update, the yield bill, that the board members have seen, but public probably hasn't seen. So, Dr. Baker, would you mind just providing a quick summary of that first, before answering the next question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm looking at Matt, because on some level, we can do that. I think another approach could be to add that, you know, to the superintendent's report in the next meeting, so that we're able to really give you a fuller sense of what that looks like as a whole. And, and Matt has had a chance to do calculations that he can bring with a slide, because that generally affects the tax rate. I don't know whether you whipped those up this afternoon, or whether, yeah.
No, no.
I put it on the radio anyway.
Yeah.
By no means did I need to look at dollars.
Yeah.
It's more of concern that.
Yep.
That is happening, because I do think it's going to cause some issues as we move forward.
For 2027.
As we move forward here. And I know the School Board Association is asking people to, you know, touch bases with their legislators and that kind of thing, to give them feedback.
Off, off the cuff, I can say that the, you know, fiscal cliffs are a well-known thing. You use one-time money, one year, you don't have it the next year.
Oh, I know.
This one-time money, I think, is surplus. And so maybe state might run another surplus and have more money to continue to buy down. We also have things like the tax rate discount would shrink, so the state's buying less discount following year. And so that means that the savings are realized in that way. And so there's some things that go one way, and some things that go another way. And it's not all a cliff, but the magnitude matters in this case. And so that, I think, would lead to a number crunch for next time.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we'll put that on for next time. You know, just to make sure we're understanding, you know, fully where we are with that and what the impacts to our district might be.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Any other questions on that before we keep going?
Yeah.
I don't, I have not been following this nearly as closely as many others have, so some of this might not be real. But something I appreciated in what the superintendent's advances of a policy was the, as a proposal, was the focus on construction costs, and just the reality of construction costs and transportation, both of which felt pretty lacking in the governor's proposal. And I'm curious, Wendy, or anyone who paid attention to the testimony or to the committee, the Senate Education Committee that received this proposal, if there was any discussion on that, and kind of what the legislature's response was? Because that feel, those feel like such critical factors in any of the decision-making that's going to happen. And I'm interested to know if other lawmakers appreciate that.
So the, the proposal was provided to both the House and Senate Ed Committees. And the, the most thorough discussion of it happened in the Senate Ed Committee. The, the superintendents, you know, who are my colleagues, they, they, I think, did a, just an excellent job, really helping the legislators understand that it's one thing to make a policy, let's even say of, you know, 15 students in a classroom, right? Which, that is what our average will be in, in our K-5 classrooms across the district next year. So that, on its face, seems like that makes, okay, that seems okay. But then, you know, what does that mean when you're talking about some buildings that actually can't even, can't house that? You know, and, and what does that look like? You know, and, and so we are able to do multi-grades. There are other places in the state where you simply can't put that many kids together in a grade without consolidating schools. And so when you start to consolidate schools to meet a, a class-size minimum, how do you do that if you don't have buildings that can take that many kids, you know, in that way? So, so the superintendents did a nice job, really helping them understand the role of school construction in any kind of moving to scale that happened in school size, which has to happen in many places related to classroom size, because our, many of our buildings are small, you know? And, and they were built that way to begin with. So, so to that point, they, they covered that. They also made the point, which is why I think the, the idea of having some of the district work be done from the end of the legislative session to the beginning of the next one, is, is getting some traction that, you know, nobody wants kids on a bus for, you know, more than a palatable amount of time. We differ a little bit by, say, 20 minutes, as to what everybody thinks a palatable amount of time is. But there is a point at which it doesn't feel like we're doing the right thing for kids. And so part of that GIS mapping, you know, which, you know, enables us to really look at, where do kids live, and what does that mean? And how long are they on some sort of a bus? You know, no matter what kinds of transportation districts are providing. And, you know, I think, I think those are the kinds of details that the superintendents in that, in this testimony were able to draw the legislators' attention to in ways that were compelling enough to, to, to draw the committees together more than I've seen them drawn together so far. And, and that was very encouraging. Yeah. I would expect that, I would expect that level of, of interest in detail to continue on the part of the legislators.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Baker? I think Steve.
Yeah. Chair, I'm wondering if we could go back to the personnel appointments and resignations, just for a second? I abstained from that vote because my spouse is employed by the district, so I just wanted to put that out there. But I also, I'm kind of confused by one of the comments I heard from another board member. And I don't know what the intent of that comment was, but it was, seemed like there was a question about more or less support based on nationality. And if that was the intent of that question, I, I just don't know that that's appropriate. I don't think that's how the system operates. I think this is. I think the system should support any candidate who is doing whatever they are doing in whatever situation, the same. And so I don't know if, perhaps I misunderstood that comment, maybe that's on me, I don't know. But it was, it didn't quite land right with me, so I just did want to circle back to that because I think it's very important for everyone that we level-set very clearly, and that's part of what I am doing here. And so if I'm in the wrong space there, let me know, but I did want to circle back on that, so.
Okay, thank you, Steve. And Mary Heather?
I don't, I'm making assumptions here, but I think it was probably in reference to some of the history of moms and students not respecting the former person in that role based on their race. And so I think the comment was probably around concern to make sure that this, this role is supported well.
I can appreciate that.
That's what I think that's, I'm making assumptions, though, so.
Thank you for the context.
Yeah.
Okay. Looks like Sean is here.
Okay.
Do you want to do your next one, or do you?
I can, I can do, I can do one more, and, well, I could even do both in a very short order, I think.
Okay.
Yep, so just an update on Ripton enrollment. The last time we met, I let you know that the, I had asked parents to make sure that I understood if they, you know, had different plans, you know, for next year that would impact enrollment for '25, '26 by the 24th of March. And so I just have an update for you that, based on some of that communication that I've received from parents, the, as we think our way through, you know, how best to serve the students in Ripton, the most that the, that the school could have would be 22 students. That includes students who are in the Wellness and Learning Center, which, the district is in the process of thinking about how best to serve students that need a little bit of an alternative placement. And our small schools are something that we're thinking about carefully relative to that because of the staffing needs that are related to that, and also just, they're smaller, and sometimes the alternative, you know, programming that students might need that are accessing that resource is not always the best for a small school, as we've kind of gone through this year and done some learning. So, you know, so that means that we might have 20 students in Ripton. If parents who've suggested that they would like an alternative arrangement for their child are all allowed to do so, we would have 14, you know, that would be enrolled in the school, and that would be in one classroom of six and one classroom of eight, based on what I know today. So I just wanted to give you that as an update, as to kind of where we are at this point. And I don't expect that we will have additional information that you will need to consider relative to that, that is more than you have to, have to kind of think about at this point. Operationally, I think we're just waiting for the board's guidance as to how we need to engage in planning and so on and so forth for the '25, '26 year. The only other item on the superintendent's report for tonight relates to just making sure that the board is apprised of a couple of things that we are talking about across the district. You know, I think you are used to this time of year conversations about grade configurations that begin to happen. And, you know, if you are familiar with Mary Hogan's process, right, they have multiple classrooms within the same grade. So, so thinking about, okay, do we need three sections of first grade or four sections of first grade? And how do we know that? So the Mary Hogan team is doing that specifically related to student data. Everybody at this point is looking at, what is the student data that we have, and what does that tell us about where to go from here? And part of the reason that that's an emphasis this year is the good work that Owen Prescott has done in preparing EduClimer, which is a system that pulls multiple sources of student achievement data together so that principals and school teams have a lot in the same place so that they really can begin to see how students do on large-scale assessments, how much progress are they making relative to screeners that are administered multiple times a year, and so forth. So, so, so those are underway. In Bridport and Shoreham, there's a little bit of a different conversation going on, in that this year, for the first time, I think maybe ever, they will both have three classroom configurations. So you might remember that Shoreham's enrollment has dropped a little bit for next year because they have a large fifth-grade class that's moving on, and a regular-size, you know, kindergarten that's coming in. So they will have a K-1, a 2, 3, and a 4, 5, three classroom teachers. And in Bridport, they will have a K-1, a 2, 3, and a 4, 5. So that's different in that, prior to this year, not all of the classrooms were multi-grade. And with our focus and our resources around student data, staffs in all buildings, including those two, are thinking about how best to organize the way that they are going to, going to staff and build classrooms and curricular materials and resources in order to help students make more than a year's worth of growth. This is a conversation that's happening across the district, you know? Because if a student is, is almost proficient in something, if they just make a year's worth of growth, well, then they're almost proficient next year in that thing, too, because the standards move up, you know, as the grades move up. So if we want a student to go from almost proficient in an area to proficient in an area, they have to make more than a year's worth of growth, roughly, you know? That's a, right, statisticians would say that's, you know, it's, it's, it's an ish, you know, in that respect. But that's the concept. And so in Bridport and Shoreham, right after we had a pass budget, I met with them immediately, in part because of the testimony that the Bridport teachers took so much care to put together, that expressed their worries about being able to do this and do this well in a multi-grade classroom. Understanding that classrooms of 15 are fine, but, but the multi-grade with enhanced academic expectations, as we're moving away from the pandemic, that's something that it was going to take a lot of diligence. So I met with both staffs right afterwards to say, where are you? What are you thinking? What do you need? We're about to put together lots of resources for you to help you over the summer, other resources, like some of the instructional specialists that we've talked about in literacy and math, and so on and so forth. How are you feeling? And to a person, they all will do whatever they can for the, for, for the students, and they will say, we're going to be all in, and we will make, we will make this work. And, you know, they also have permission to think about other things, too, you know? And so in the course of our conversation, the possibility of thinking about single grades, which can be achieved by combining kids from the two schools, still maintaining the schools, but perhaps having a K-1, 2 in one school and a 3, 4, 5 in another, you know, I gave them permission to consider that, if they felt that that was important to think about in this time. So both staffs have taken time, thought about that. They met together this afternoon, and they would like, my blessing, your blessing, to explore this with parents in both communities, not because it is the option that should be taken, but because before we make decisions about how best to support kids to make more than a year's worth of growth, parents, as the most important partners that we have, should be brought into a conversation so that we're all moving forward together, however that is, you know, in that way. And so, you know, in the past, any conversation that even touched the edges, as I'm understanding it, of two schools combining for anything was politically fraught and very challenging, and has led to a great deal of worry on the part of the teachers that they may somehow be, by trying to think with parents about what, what the options are for kids, may be stepping into zones they're not at all interested in stepping into. I have assured them that is not how I think about that, and I'm bringing it before you to ensure that you are also equally supportive of them having the conversations with their parent communities that they feel are important, and supporting however those work themselves out for the '25, '26 year. So I guess this is just a check with you to make sure that you have an opportunity to weigh in on the matter, if you think that's important, prior to my giving them the go-ahead to explore things with their parents, you know, and their communities as, as they would normally be doing in any other grade configuration situation, if we, if it was within a school, you know, as has been done in the past. But this is just maybe a different option that may or may not be the right thing. So are there concerns or questions about that?
Mary Heather?
I guess the first one that comes to mind, and it's just the policy implications and maneuvering around C-30, and how, how the board, yeah, the board's intended work on that policy coordinates with this idea, and kind of which comes first. So I'm just, I'm curious, your thoughts about that, and perhaps other board members, especially those who've served on policy.
Okay. And did you want to address that at this point, or I'll go ahead and just?
I mean, I guess my, my stock answer to that is, you know, if educators and parents tend to come together and believe something is really important for student learning, then, you know, the, finding the way through that to enable that to happen, you know, it would typically be my recommendation. I think there are ways to go about that, to establish a pilot, you know, that, that might be really important for these kids, if the teachers and parents come to the conclusion together that it is, which they are under absolutely no obligation or pressure to do. You know, that's just a discussion that we're having. And, and it's important that, that's a discussion that parents are involved in, you know, so that it's not just, here, here's what we're going to do, and, and, you know, that's my perspective. They're able to say, well, here's what is of interest to us, and here's what I'm thinking is about that. The policy pieces can be, those workarounds could be done to enable a pilot, I think, without too much trouble.
Laura, and then Ellen.
So we spoke, we talked about this as a policy committee, and we had one very, I thought, energizing meeting about it before it kind of got shelved for some other things. D6. Right, D6, basically. And I, I guess my comment on it is, as a board, we serve our students' best interests, and I think it would be terribly short-sighted of us not to allow the teachers to have a conversation with their respective parent stakeholders, to find the best way forward for those students.
Together, yeah.
Ellen?
Yeah, I was going to say, it was a really interesting couple of weeks on the policy committee, and we were considering this as a model, and I think one of the reasons we decided to not bring it to the full board was partly because we appreciated that a lot of process needed to happen outside of that committee to really explore, not just for one, for these two schools, but for other schools that could combine similarly. I think pilot studies are great, but most importantly, like what Laura said, an open conversation between educators and parents about what's best for the kids is wonderful. If we're not willing to hear that, like, if we're not willing to approve that conversation happening and then receive the information, then I think we're failing our job. So I appreciate you and the educators kind of putting your heads down and thinking about it, Wendy, and then I'm excited to hear what the, what the feedback is.
Anyone else?
I mean, I'll just say, I'm excited about this. Like, yes, by all means, have this conversation. I'm really intrigued to see what everyone gets back, their, their feedback. I think it's great that these more out-of-the-box, maybe just to the edge-of-the-box ideas are being considered, and I love that it seems like this is coming from, from the educators and their, their experience and, and recommendations, and I'm excited to see where it goes.
I have every faith in our educators, especially when they are working in concert with parents, you know, and determining what's best for kids. And so, so we, our office will support that as needed in that way. And, and I think it's important, you know, to, to ensure that should, they choose to do something a little bit different, that that really has no bearing on, you know, the things that may come in the future relative to state things or other policy communication things. It's, it's a, you know, it's an opportunity for them to be thinking and working together and doing what's best for kids. So if that conversation begins to have some legs, then our office will make sure that the operational elements, you know, feel okay, and if it meets those two tests, then, then I would like to see them come back to you for a request for an exception relative to C-30 in that way, for a pilot year at the end of April. So, you know, it's not a long time between now and then, but I think enough time to get a sense of where we're going and then allow people to think through it. Either way, either with multi-grade situations where, you know, the staff works together in ways they can, or perhaps aligns units and does some things with kids together even in that respect, or, you know, as they're thinking, you know, a little bit more broadly out of a box. So, thank you for that time. That concludes my report.
Did anyone else want to weigh in? Okay, great. Well, thank you. And you don't need anything else from us at this point?
I do not.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so we do have our...
7:15.
Yes, and we have our visitor here. And so what we'll do now is go up to Item F on the agenda, which is our executive session, and it's for confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services per 1 VSA 313A1F. And so first, what I'd like to do is have a motion to move into executive session. Suzanne?
I move that we go into executive session for confidential attorney-client communications per 1 VSA 313A1F.
Thank you.
One second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of our moving into an executive session, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we'll give a couple minutes for... Let's continue under Report of the Chair. So I think, at the time, there's a couple, at least one item on here that I would like to cover this evening, so that we can finalize our committee assignments. As per the email I sent out on Sunday morning, Policy A2 specifically states that the policy committee is to consist of three members, right? And so what the executive committee is doing is bringing that before you to decide whether or not we could get an exception to that policy to be able to go to four members.
For this year.
For this year. And then it becomes a policy decision thereafter. So if we want to change the policy, that would be another thing we can do in the future. Yes, Ellen?
Can I make a motion that we make an exception to allow for four members to serve in the policy committee until this policy can be amended to reflect that membership number?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
We've had four members on the policy committee for this past year. I thought it's been a really good size, and I would like to see that continue.
Okay.
Is four an issue as far as meeting quorum and all that joy? Because you need to have three in order to hold the meeting.
Right.
And that hasn't been a problem?
That's not been, that's not been a problem.
Shut up.
Yeah.
And there's no, like, normally you have an odd number, so that there's no, that's not how the policy committee operates. We don't really vote on anything.
Right.
It's just policy crafting.
Yeah.
So there's no, it's not contentious.
Any other discussion? Suzanne?
So the only reason, I just want to let people know, the reason these numbers are here, is because when we unified, there were numerous times where these committees had huge numbers on them, like six, seven people on them, and, I mean, I, I was a member of the policy committee, and I can't tell you how many times I would drive out to Moms, only to be told that, you know, there was me and maybe two other people, and we couldn't hold the meeting, so I would get back in my car and turn around and drive all the way back to Bridport again. So when they originally put this policy... So when they originally put this policy together, it was with the hopes that the, they would keep the committee small enough so that they could always have a quorum. And so that was the design behind it. It wasn't to say that, you know, these committees, they don't, you know, three people is all that you need. It was just because they had canceling meetings and we never moved forward. So that figuring that with three people on them, on the standing committees, that you would always be able to get a quorum.
Any other discussion?
Just call to vote.
Okay, sure. Um, all those in favor of, um, granting an exception to allow four participants to be on the policy committee until the policy can be changed, which is, um, what the motion stated by Ellen, um, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Excellent. So, um, with that information, later tonight, or maybe first thing in the morning, I will send an email with, um, your policy, your, um, committee assignments. Um, the next one, I'm, I'm fearful will take too long um, to come up with, um, the committee charge. Um, we're all tired. Um, so we, you know, one path forward here is we wait, put this on the next regular board meeting, um, to come up with a charge. And then, um, just a second, and then, um, this particular committee just won't convene until we've had the charge, or we could convene and, and, you know, um, assign a chair and all that kind of thing, and kind of for now utilize what we talked about that's within the minutes, um, with the understanding that we really do want to establish a charge for this as soon as possible. Um, Ellen?
Can the committee bring a char, a draft charge to the board to consider? Could that be like the first order of business for the committee?
I, what do folks think?
The board is what gives the committees the charge.
But, but the committee could do the brainstorming and bring a draft to the board, and then the board would refine it, and we could adopt it at a later meeting, just to not slow down the work of that committee. That could be the sort of their, they could propose something to the board.
I think it's up to the board.
Well, as an alternate, could we, uh, request that the executive committee come to our next meeting with a charge for us to work off of?
And, and that's awesome as well. Even one of those, um, or we work on a, you know, put it on the agenda and work through it.
Yep.
So, go ahead.
I'm in support of either one of those options, so that we move forward quickly.
Yes, exactly.
I don't think it matters whether it's the executive committee or whomever is assigned. I think it's taking, um, and using our board members efficiently.
Yes, yeah, I do, too.
So, parallel question, does it look like we're going to have another meeting before our?
And I want to talk, yeah, so I want to talk about that, too. But let's finish this.
Well, so if I, if I were to make a motion, would it be for our next meeting or for our next regularly scheduled meeting, which would be the second Monday of?
So I guess what motion, I have to know a little bit more what you're trying to do to answer that question.
Okay, Suzanne?
I'll do it.
Okay.
So I make a motion that at our next regularly scheduled board meeting, which will be the second Monday of April, that, um, the executive committee come forward with a outline of a charge for the student outcomes committee.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I really, I, I, I really think that the commit, this would be a great thing to allow the committee to meet and work on. And the executive committee, you all have so many things to discuss. So you would do a great job, but if a group of people are already getting together as a committee on this, it might be mo- most efficient to ask those people to come with their.
Would, would you like to amend the motion?
It seems weird to me to ask a committee to come up with their own committee charge.
Well, we're asking the executive committee. I mean, we're asking a committee to, to brainstorm something either way. But I, I won't, I know, I want the meeting to end more than I want.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
I actually thought we asked you to do that. I'm not calling attention to anything that you didn't do or whatever. I'm just asking, like, wasn't that, I thought we were gonna be talking about some charge that you guys wrote tonight.
Um, we didn't specifically say that.
Oh, okay.
Um, you know, at the last meeting, it wasn't rec- captured in the minutes.
I see. Okay, I guess I misunderstood.
Yeah. So, um, let's go ahead and do the vote then, um, unless somebody else has some additional discussion. All those in favor of having the executive committee present a draft charge, uh, for board consideration, right? It can still change. Um, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. We'll do that. And the final thing I have on there, the C twenty-eight and C twenty-nine, we can postpone that. There's no reason to talk about the legal review at this point unless you think otherwise, Dr. Baker?
It's probably, uh, it, it's actually probably a quick thing. If it's not a quick thing, then you can postpone it. But, you know, I think, um, you know, it's fairly understood that federal and state law regarding, um, you know, opportunities afforded to transgender students which are covered under C twenty-nine and the way in which equity is, um, determined, which is covered under, uh, C twenty-eight are incompatible with each other. Recommendation, um, from our attorneys is to put them under legal review. That's a formal board action that, um, that you can take. We would, um, during that time, they, we implement them as they're written. Um, and if a circumstance comes up, um, where, uh, you know, as we're sorting out those conflicts, um, there needs to be something that is a change to the policy, then the policy committee sorts that out, you know, and, and hears that and then brings those changes to the board in that process. So, um, but in the meantime, um, putting policies under legal review is a matter of due diligence that, that would suggest that the board is recognizing the conflict between state and federal law as they may exist and is taking the appropriate steps to determine how best to resolve it.
I'd like to move to put policy C twenty, C twenty-nine under legal review and charge the policy committee to conduct the review.
Second. Any discussion?
And this was advised by our legal counsel?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's also advised by the V S B A.
Yeah.
Okay.
Helps us navigate these kinds of challenges. Jess?
I just have a question about, um, like, how we'll communicate this to the public if questions arise, like, if I was a parent, I'd be like, hmm, that feels uncomfortable, given that there's a lot of protections on the state level and that things are constantly in flux federally. I'd be worried that things might be prematurely under review, as we've seen with another V S B A decision recently, and other states doing things really premature that result in lawsuits. So I'm just curious about, because I, like, do we usually, would someone bring a question to public comment, or do we kind of, yeah, communicate out to families if there's questions, if that makes sense?
I think, um, policies are typically almost always under legal review as a whole. Um, I, I think in this case, um, uh, there's substantial conflicts between, uh, you know, um, federal and, and state requirements. Um, so, um, the board recognizing those conflicts and, and charging the policy committee with, with ensuring that review, uh, assists that, that any of those discussions are held in the public forum, which actually allows for parents to be able to follow the conversation. Um, it puts it in the public eye. And, um, and, and it also, um, demonstrates due diligence on the part of the school district. Um, you know, as, um, as it is for sound administration of the school district, you need to, to ensure through my efforts that the school, um, is run in accordance with federal and state legal compliance. So in this case, you're charging the policy committee with sorting out exactly what that is, given this conflicting context. In the meantime, our policies stay as they are, uh, and they're implemented as they are, um, until that legal review is concluded.
And any work the policy committee does is open, right? So people can participate, as well as once a month, you know, our committees read out, and so it would obviously be something if all of a sudden there was a change required, that would be read out, and so the whole board would be informed as well as the public that, um, this is what we're dealing with. Right? So I, I believe that, and then people could then start to really watch the policy committee if they wanted to. Okay, any other questions?
Can I just make another statement on that? Is that the Communication Engagement Committee is also sort of involved with communicating the best way forward for stuff like that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of putting policy C twenty-eight and C twenty-nine under legal review and charge the policy committee to conduct the review, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so, um, that is passed. As we tried to navigate, um, our decision um, related to what we want to do with Ripton, and based on the fact that it's almost April and there's decisions that really need to be made, um, fairly quickly, I would like to recommend that we actually set up a special board meeting on the thirty-first, which is a Monday, if possible, at six-thirty. And then I will rework the schedule, you know, we'll reschedule the goal setting. I think it's more important, um, you know, that we focus on what we're gonna do with Ripton and the decision that, um, we as a board are going to make. Um, so I've, if we did it on the thirty-first, would folks be able to attend?
I will be out of town.
You will be out of town.
There's no school that day, right?
Yeah, it's, uh, off there.
Was, sorry, was the thirty-first the best date for everybody on the poll?
For, for the policy, we didn't, um, for the goal-setting session, the thirty-first wasn't actually in play. It was Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Then Wednesday was the next date. Um, you know, if you looked at just, um, the best, um, time for everyone to get together to talk about goals was Wednesday at five-thirty. But it wasn't a hundred percent. It was ten.
I'm, I'm sorry, Barb. I'm super punchy. Are you suggesting the thirty-first for the goal-setting conversation?
No, no.
It's a Ripton conversation, and then we still have a goal-setting conversation.
And we will reschedule that. We're gonna kick that down the road.
God.
Because I'm not, I'm gonna have you meet twice in next week. And we'll work with April and try to come up with a good time for the goal-setting. So I'll send out another poll. So right now, what's, I'm trying to schedule is just, um, the discussion around, the special meeting around Ripton.
And Chair, are you planning for that to be completely in-person, or if we have people that are not available in town, they could?
I could maybe zoom in. Zoom in.
It's, it's, yeah, we could do it.
Skipping something, but.
Yes, if, we could definitely, um, do it as a hybrid meeting. And it's in open session. It's so I'm not, I heard one, um, possibly no, um, and if you can make it, that'd be great. So I'm gonna make a decision, in lieu of hearing anything contrary, um, that we, um, schedule a special board meeting on Monday, the thirty-first. Is it better to stick with our six-thirty time? Or would it be more useful if we moved it to five-thirty or six for folks? Or if it's half a dozen, one, the other?
I mean, five-thirty is better, to be honest, but I think there's a reason why we can't do five-thirty.
The early is, the earlier is better for me, that particular day.
Okay.
Five-thirty's fine for me.
It's five-thirty? Would five-thirty work for folks?
Okay, great.
Okay, so, so be it. So we'll do that at five-thirty, and I'll get that warned. Thank you so much. Um, next up is second public, um, comment period. And, um, there's no public in the room. Jason, is there anyone?
I've got some folks on Zoom.
On Zoom?
Hand up.
Is there hand? I'm sorry. No, okay, thank you. Um, and next, board reflections, um, unless someone has something they want to share, I'm assuming, thinking we'll just continue on. And so then, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.